To call this. It's Monday, May twenty second. First on our agenda are city updates. So Ms. Solano, please take it away.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair of City Council. Mayor Gradisar is in attendance this evening. He's in Washington DC, attending the EPA Local Government Advisory Committee meetings and he will be back on Wednesday. Actually, I think he's back tomorrow, but he'll be back in the office on Wednesday. I do have just a couple of updates and the first is a is an ARPA update about the actions this evening that are before City Council during the work session, Neighbor Works will be presenting a request for nine hundred thousand dollars. They're ready to start some infrastructure in the in the Pike's Peak Park and along with our grant from the I the IJA. We don't have access to spend those resources until later this year when we get the approval from the federal government. And so waiting that long into starting the infrastructure plan that they have in place, I think it is a conflict. So there before you tonight in work session. Uh, there's a resolution this evening that is a one hundred and fifty dollars and it will start the streetscapes projects that have some street scape already in the works. It's along Northern and Ormond to Elm Street in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And because it's of a community that was hardest hit by COVID, it can come out of the ARPA lost revenue. So it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar request. On first reading this evening is the Boys and Girls Club Summer Weekend Teen Center with a revised budget up from a hundred and thirty-three to one fifty-three. The Boys and Girls Clubs did present last Monday and finalize the budget with our Parks Department and the El Centro, the King of the Soul Team that arrived in the additional necessity with some costs. So it is first reading for one hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight. Um, and in other ARPA action, I did forward to you the update on the page, Employee Labor, a recalculation of the ARPA Essential Worker Pay today. Sharing the the increase in cost and and next steps for the union membership to take a vote on the methodology to create that essential worker premium pay in support of which method. And they will meet on June twelfth and will be back to speak to the mayor after that. And after that, we'll put the resolution back on for your consideration. And that's all of ARPA. In moving on, I did want to share a bit about the warrant forgiveness program that occurred this last Saturday. Um, I talked with Judge Sykes today and the court administrator who said it was a very successful event. They estimated that they saw over three hundred people. They cleared ninety-six warrants. And what that means is they they actually received and communicated with ninety-six people to take the next step. Their 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 fee was not necessarily removed, but it was the next step in the action. They also assisted eighty people with Pablo County warrants as they were in line for quite a while and they were able to assist them. By three o'clock, they had to close the doors with a line still remaining. So made the decision that they invited them all back again tomorrow when there is no docket uh, for the municipal court and they will continue to assist them tomorrow all day. So a successful event. And when I talked with the judge, she was going to meet with her staff and determine the frequency rather than just occasionally to do this. Uh, maybe on a quarterly semi-annual twice a year, like, you know, a a regularly scheduled opportunity to clear warrants. And then lastly, um, I was asked to make sure and remind the public that if you live in the smelter super fund site, there is a telephone town hall tomorrow evening. Um, there is a phone, a phone number that you need to dial into. It does begin at six PM and for further instructions, um, they suggest you use a toll-free number to to call into make arrangements probably for them to call you. And I'll speak slowly as I read the one hundred, uh, one eight hundred number. It is toll-free at one eight hundred two two seven eight nine one seven. Or you could call our local EPA Director at Beth Archer at seven one zero five one two one nine one seven for additional information. Again, that's the in the community with the Colorado smelter site. And it is a telephone town hall tomorrow evening at six PM. And that concludes the city updates this evening. Do you have questions or directions for me?
Yeah, thank you for that update, Ms. Solano, uh, Counselor Flores.
I just wanted to follow up on a telephone conversation we had about the bleachers and Ray Aguilera Park. Just to let the council know, uh, this particular baseball park lost their bleachers because they uh, were really unsafe and they were also part of the seats, I think, were made with asbestos. So they decided to remove those and uh, there's a big tournament this weekend and uh, uh, with the help of Mike Sexton and he was very, very cooperative. They're gonna try to bring in some other used bleachers during the baseball tournament that they're gonna have at at this park. I think it's called, is it Joe Santos? Uh, baseball tournament. And so we get quite a few people out of town. They they love that event. And so I I first I wanted to thank Mike and his people for uh, coming up with the resolution. They're gonna do something there. Uh, but since we're talking about ARPA, could you look into the possibility of the replacement of those bleachers? Uh, utilizing the ARPA project and maybe both Steve and Mike can put their heads together and tell us what it would cost. It's it's a small baseball field and it's just, you know, I it's not a a big area, but I think that they might qualify for ARPA money. And I don't think it's a huge, you know, cost to us, but I'd I'd like to look into that. And then if if that doesn't work out, then potentially uh, during our budget talks, we could uh, maybe include the cost of getting those bleachers. And uh, you know, if you could follow up on that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Other questions or comments, uh, Counselor Graham?
Ms. Solano, do we have an update on the ten thousand dollar retention bonus for the police?
In last week's, um, I do have one. Um, so last week's, um, ARPA meeting, uh, the city attorney um, our inner city attorney was sharing with the committee, uh, the regulations as they're required and made the determination to reach out to the Treasury Department for clarification on the use of ARPA and in what method and what section would best qualify. And I made that call into Washington DC last Thursday. Uh, they assigned me to a case manager with a case number and asked for me to wait one week, but I I will follow up tomorrow, um, so that I could be back hopefully to report to the um, the internal ARPA team on Wednesday morning.
Other questions or comments? Speaking of ARPA, looking at our work session schedule, um, can you clarify, Ms. Solano, if all of the upcoming ARPA presentations, when we see ARPA update, are those organizations who are asking for money? Or are they presenting an update regarding their past ARPA spend monies, I guess?
Uh, coming up this summer, there's some in the end of June and in July and then going into August. Um, those are those organizations who've had pretty good impact. Um, so they are here, they're going to present oh, how many, how many individuals they've assisted, what the impact has been. Um, some for the eviction of Boys and Girls Club, there will be a couple internal with respect to the use of the ten million dollars for lost revenue. So they are, they are not asking for additional resources. They are updating uh, the status and the impact of what they did receive.
Great. Uh, seeing no other questions then from Ms. Solano, Counselor Flores, just kidding.
I have a couple of suggestions for some items on our work sessions. And there's two topics that I'd like to focus on. And one of them, and I'll give you the card, you won't have to write this down, uh, because they opened up the New East and the New Central. Uh, and I went to both of those. I ran into um, Dr. Kasevich, who I worked with when I was on the school board. And she was telling me that she's now in charge of of a department within the district called Exceptional Student Services. And she was telling me about uh, the amount of mental health issues that kids have today in our district. And I suggested that she come and give us a report uh, on a, on a television night so that the community can get some information about what is happening in our, in our city with our children as far as uh, the, the, their mental health. And uh, and I'll let you maybe come up with the title after you talk to her, but this is her card. And I I think it would really be a um, a topic that I think is of interest to the community. And they're seeing more, they're seeing more homeless children too. And uh, so I don't think we we are always looking at the surface of everything. I think we need to dig deeper down in there and find out exactly what's going on. And then the second, uh, I ran into a gentleman that asked me, are you guys gonna look at at rank choice voting? And 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 I says, well, we talked about it four years ago. And uh, in several states, in fact, the state of Alaska uh, used that method to select, I don't remember if it was the governorship or whether it was a senate seat, I can't remember. But I thought it would be interesting to just bring the topic up again to understand how it works. And whether or not it really works in these elections where you have twelve, sixteen people running. And and it gives, it gives people a choice of ranking, maybe the top three that they would select. And in what order? And there's more and more cities are going toward that. I'm not saying we do it this year, but I think it will be an educational opportunity. And I've got the gentleman's name and I'll send that to you. That's all I have.
Other questions? Um, so actually, if we're looking at our work session schedule for the rest of twenty twenty-three, um, though we're already booking out until late June, I'm definitely open to taking work session requests because the summer, in my experience last year, it was pretty uh, dead and silent. So if you have any work session requests that you would like to have either on televised or non-televise nights, we can get that scheduled. Okay, moving on our agenda is our, we're gonna hear from our friends at Neighbor Works. So can I have Ms. Winans and Ms. Plushak to the podium, please, discussing the Sun Mountain Park Infrastructure ARPA request?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to come and speak in front of you today and place in our request. Um, I am Tamara Plushak. I am the Real Estate Manager with Neighbor Works Southern Colorado. And Ashley Winans with CEO with Neighbor Works Southern Colorado as well. We are coming to you today to request funding through ARPA. And the area in which we are focusing these funds is going to be in the Pike's Peak Park area. That is indicated by the yellow portion that is outlined in the blue census tract here. Um, it is located on Pablo's west side. Um, our project will have influence to the greater Pablo area. Just some quick facts about this area is the census tract is located um, within an opportunity zone and has a population of nearly three thousand with thirty-two percent living below the poverty level and another twenty-five percent living with some type of disability on the west side. Um, as a note, almost seventy percent of the people residing within this census tract um, are identifying as a person of color. Our Pike's Peak Park development, I'm sure you've all seen, um, we did our groundbreaking last Friday, the nineteenth. And we are now moving dirt, so it's, it's in the works. Um, we are providing affordable home ownership, home ownership opportunities within Pike's Peak. Um, it will provide six hundred and seven housing units consisting of multifamily condos, townhomes and single-family homes. Um, it will be uh, mixed use and mixed income, including commercial, community buildings, urban gardens and um, just about fifteen acres of public parks and green space. In addition to that, when we say mixed income, it does have, um, it will include permanently affordable homeownership opportunities. And that is through um, shared equity homeownership, seventy-four percent of the single-family homes that are being built within Pike's Peak Park, um, will have some type of affordability to them. Now, when we say shared equity, I know it's something new, uh, not to um, give too much, get too much into the weeds, but we do want to let you know what the basic definition of shared equity is. And that is a self-sustaining model that takes a one-time public investment to make the affordable, the home affordable for a lower-income family and then restricting that home's sale price each time it is sold to keep it affordable for subsequent low-income families who then purchase that same home. The main, the key word here is that one-time public investment. That one-time public investment is key and comes by way of a variety of different resources like federal, state and local grant funding as well as investment in infrastructure. That is why we're here today and requesting ARPA funding. The phase one of this development is going to have one hundred and fourteen single-family units, sixty of which are going to participate in the Shared Equity Homeownership Program. And then another hundred and eight units, which will be multifamily units and managed by a third-party partner of ours, um, all of which are slated to be affordable as well. The sixty units um, that are showing right here is shared equity homeownership are are going to come into play in just a moment. So I wanted to take note of that. Our ask this evening is for nine hundred thousand dollars. These funds would be used towards infrastructure within Sun Mountain Boulevard. That will be required for us as Neighbor Works to install and incur the cost of those as we begin to build homes, um, prior to that raise grant becoming available. Um, if you all recall, Ms. Solano just actually mentioned about the raise grant being funded. That was awarded to the city last year for, I believe, sixteen point eight million dollars. Um, that is to construct Sun Mountain Boulevard from thirty-four first, going all the way down south to Twenty-Fourth Street where our project is. It'll actually bisect our, our project in half. Um, the raise grant would include all of the utilities underneath the, um, underneath Sun Mountain Boulevard. However, as we are now breaking ground and putting in infrastructure, um, part of that infrastructure will be required to be put in prior to the raise grant funding becoming available. Um, from our understanding with talks with the city is that contracts with the raise grant will not be solidified until later this year around November. Um, which is after the fact of when we will need to be putting in these, um, this infrastructure in order to be have homes being built and having the loops gone through Sun Mountain. We will, I'm sorry, we are working with KR Sword Figure as our general contractor. They have come up with this budgetary pricing that you're seeing now. Um, you'll see the first highlighted section there, which is eight hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars. So just under the nine hundred thousand that we are requesting. That is just for that portion of utilities that we would need to put in. That's including the earthwork, the utilities, the supplies. Um, the grading, everything basically that we're gonna be needing to put into Sun Mountain just for that section. The it's the very minimum that we would need to put in, um, just to make these first uh, few blocks of homes available prior to this, prior to the raise grant funding kicking in. And just to give you a little bit of the impact of what that nine hundred thousand dollars would do. That nine hundred thousand dollars investment in infrastructure, if you recall in our presentation, we said that one-time public investment is key um, in our, in the shared equity program. This nine hundred thousand dollars could be used and we will put that in there as um, being able to reinvest that back into those sixty shared equity units that we will have in this first phase that these homes are, that this infrastructure is impacting. And that will result in about fifteen thousand dollars um, in shared equity per of the per unit of those sixty units. So that's fifteen thousand dollars less that those homeowners will need to come up with um, in order to get into that home. We are right now seeing that there is a gap of seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars of affordability between what somebody can afford and what they're needing in order to purchase a home and get out of that rental cycle and move into homeownership. And so that fifteen thousand dollars will allow us to help bridge that gap. We are already, uh, we've already received nearly nine hundred thousand dollars from um, from HUD for um, for shared, I'm sorry, sweat equity homeownership program as well. And that is twenty-five thousand dollars per unit um, that we've applied towards those sixty as well. So this will help impact that and grow that gap and I'm sorry, increase that amount that we are having to fill in that gap. So it'll, it'll help in that way. Um, this investment is also showing the city's commitment to affordable homeownership and affordable housing in general. And it comes in as a valuable resource as we go out to look for matching funds. They like to see that your local entities are supporting your project. And when we say that the city is supporting us with, with giving us the nine hundred thousand dollars to place into that project that it is, um, then that seen as as matching funds that we can reach out to from other government and entities and other private funding. Any questions?
Great. Thank you, Tamara and Ashley for that presentation. Um, what questions are there from council? Counselor Flores?
When uh, the the sixty units that will be part of this uh, this new project uh, with the shared equity piece, uh, they will actually own the home through and have a mortgage just like anybody else. Uh, explain to us why it's different, uh, because of the way the land is being treated uh, through some sort of a land trust. If you could elaborate on that, just to be clear.
Yeah, so we're using shared equity through a deed restriction, actually, um, but they improve land. You know, all of those costs go on to the new owner anytime you you build. So the share of the equity it through that deed restriction holds that house in an affordable deed restriction for ninety-nine years. Um, so it functions similarly to a land trust, um, but we chose to go with deed restrictions because the first mortgages, because they will be obtaining a first mortgage just lower than what the actual value market rate for that house is, um, can be sold on the secondary market, which allows us to build more quickly um, through that program.
So when, when they go to apply for a mortgage, uh, the mortgage holder is gonna just utilize the house itself and not the land or or can the mortgage company?
It'll be the house and the land. They have to accept that second, though, that deed restriction. And that's why we actually went this route, um, because it is more acceptable by like Fanny and Freddie and some of your traditional lenders.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that. Appreciate it.
Other, uh, Counselor Maestri, do you have any questions?
Um, Ashley, explain the other fif, the fifty-six remaining homes. Well, how, how is that just regular homeownership or what, what are their requirements?
So there'll be regular market rate homeownership. This first phase is split a little bit closer to fifty-fifty. Um, and as we continue to raise funds, um, future phases might have a lot more shared equity in them. Um, but their market rate, we want this to be mixed income. Um, so that you don't know whether or not your neighbor has a shared equity loan and had to go through affordable homeownership. Um, the people in the community uh, come from different socioeconomic backgrounds.
And are those, so are the homes all the same, gonna be the same cost?
They will be similar. There's gonna be different size homes and different bedroom numbers. We'll be going out to bid um, with our builders here soon. Um, but depends on the home.
Yeah, the floor plan.
Right.
And so the, but if you have floor plan A and their shared equity and floor plan A and their regular purchase, they're still gonna be the same cost?
They will not be, um,
To the buyer?
Not be to the buyer. Um, so if it's market rate and they're not qualifying as low income, selling it as market rate, then that is just whatever that appraisers at. Same type of appraisal on the shared equity, but they might have a hundred thousand dollars worth of shared equity. So their first mortgage doesn't have to be the same as that, that market rate.
Okay, I guess what I'm saying is the same sales price.
Yes.
Okay, the, okay.
It'll, to our appraisers, it'll look the the same.
Yeah, so it won't really affect the uh, regular buyers, um, appraisal when they go to sell. Because how are you? When you resell a shared equity, are we, are you reselling it at market price, but you're only caring so much for the loan portion? Because of the shared equity.
Right, that's a hundred percent correct and
Okay.
Make sure that, you know, home values stay high in that community. Um, but as that home appreciates, that bit of shared equity actually appreciates with it.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Warner?
Thanks for that presentation. I think this is a great project. Um, on the shared equity, does the owner have a chance to to, to acquire equity themselves and how much? I mean, is it gonna be worth them to put, to do upgrades and that kind of thing? I mean, you can put a lot of money into a home. So how is that working out?
Yes, you are able to, the homeowner themselves are able to uh, make improvements to the home and things of that sort within reason. So shared equity, keep in mind as we're, as we're building that shared equity, right, this program is for those that are stuck in the rental cycle, right? They're working hard, they're paying their bills. These are like our our firefighters, our, our police, our, our nurses and things like that, our teachers that are working hard, paying their bills and just don't make enough to make that first purchase of a home. That's what this program is for. It's a stepping stone.
I get that, but I'm, I'm just concerned about how much equity they get when they sell the house.
So they do get equity out, plus obviously all of their principal that they've been paying on a mortgage instead of paying rent. Um, but it is a proportion. If they make improvements to the home over five percent, that's actually a discussion with us.
Okay.
So that we can determine is that gonna depreciate or is that something that we contribute to your equity at the end?
Okay.
We had a committee essentially that worked for about a year to put this deed restriction, to make sure it was fair on both parties.
Okay, good, good. Thanks.
Uh, Counselor Martinez Ortega and then Counselor Flores.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, it's not a question, but it's more of a comment and congratulations to Southern Colorado Neighbor Works for their first deed-restricted, uh, shared equity home that's approved through Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac. Um, congratulations. And can you tell us a little bit more about that?
Yeah, it was really exciting. So, um, you probably know, we finished out Hyde Park Gardens, the build of Hyde Park Gardens next to Cesar Chavez and Dolores Huerta last year. We held one of those houses in our portfolio so that we could try this deed-restricted. Um, it was accepted by Fanny and Freddie and we're part of the duty to serve on their, their website now through this program. Um, and we wanted to sell one of the houses that we had before we got into Pike's Peak Park, make sure that our model worked. And um, Thrive Mortgage actually originated the first and it was accepted by Freddie so they could sell that first on the secondary market.
First in the nation, right?
First to go through that program. Yep, specifically that deed restriction, um, through the Fanny and Freddie duty to serve.
Great. Thank you.
I I wanted to ask one last question, and that is, uh, let's assume that a homeowner stays there fifteen years. At what point, uh, do they, uh, are they able to maybe get that deed restriction eliminated? I mean, can they buy out of this? Can they, um, is there a certain point, maybe thirty years, that the land reverts back to them? Uh, what, what is the end story, I guess, to someone that?
Our hope is that the homeowner after fifteen years becomes self-sustaining and becomes financially stable enough to use their equity that they're using within this program to purchase a home on the open market as at a market rate home. That's our, that's our hope.
It's a ninety-nine year deed restriction.
So it really is a stepping stone and they're gonna benefit by a higher equity amount so they could take that cash and move up to another another home someplace, but the deed restriction will stay that in place forever, ninety-nine years, you said. That's forever to me.
Well, and that, that's the intention because, right, we built houses in early two thousands that graduated out of um, their deed restriction. And so now they can sell them on the open market, taking all of the equity out of the, of even the subsidy. So we lose that affordable housing homeownership unit in the community. It's just lost. And so with this, it's to create opportunity for affordable homeownership just in perpetuity. So we don't have to come back and say, oh, we need sixty more affordable housing units now because those ones um, graduated out of the program.
It's a great concept.
It is, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, I think a couple of months ago, or maybe it was at our retreat when we're, when we're talking about ARPA request for the rest of the year. I know that Neighbor Works had um, around two million dollar ask for water sewer. Is this in addition to or is this in replace of?
This is in replace of. So when the city did receive the funds to um, put in Sun Mountain, the raise grant, that compensated for quite a bit of that. Um, but we still have this nine hundred thousand dollar kind of remaining that we have to put that infrastructure in that won't get covered through the race grant.
Got it. Yeah, I appreciate that. Um, okay, so now we need direction on if this is going to come before us, um, for first and second reading.
Actually, I think we have the ARPA legal review we're gonna do and we're scheduled for Wednesday. And so, um, we'll see where that goes. Uh, they're gonna have to qualify under kind of response to negative economic impact. And so they're probably gonna have to qualify as eligible funding under home or uh, HTF. I don't know how that's gonna relate to the deed restrictions you have in place. So we have some issues we have to work out through the uh, committee and we'll probably give you a feedback on that. Uh, once we get a clear idea of legally what we're gonna need to get that done. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that does make sense. So I guess what I'm hearing is the internal committee will review it. It, I mean, I feel like though it set, I feel like there's room to workshop it to make it compliant with the federal To make it compliant with the federal ARPA restrictions.
That's what we're going to try and do.
Great. So when that happens and when you do get the green flag from our attorney's office. I want to ask my fellow council members if we're good to move forward, so that way we can get this on the agenda. When that goes through. So Councilman Martinez Ortega.
Yes.
Also Graham.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Flores. Yes. Yeah, Counselor Maestri and Counselor Warner. Yep, so. Um, we look forward to hearing the outcomes of Wednesday. I'm confident that that's going to go through and then we'll see on first reading hopefully soon. Thanks, Neighbor Works.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda are the City of Update's self insured health plan. I see both Sean and Danny are on Zoom.
Good evening.
Hey, guys, how are you?
Doing well. So whenever you both are ready.
All right, I will share our presentation. Uh, if I can, yep.
All right. I think we're good to go and good evening, all of you and. And so we're going to spend about fifteen minutes and kind of walk through just real quick on the agenda. We're going to go through a quick executive summary and then the claim report review. For your medical self funded plan, and then we'll go through a little bit of benchmarking and then the kind of a little bit of a renewal overview. So for those of you that I have not met, my name is Danny Tally. I'm the Senior Vice President for Hub International. Based here in Denver and obviously Sean Seahawk is on the line as well, and she is the consultant for the City of Pueblo. We both both have worked with you guys for a little over a. Decade are glad to be here tonight to kind of walk through some of these numbers and answer any questions. So real quick on the executive summary, given we'll spend a lot of time on this, just because we want to get to the meat and potatoes, but. Over the last several years, we've obviously seen the 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 plan is kind of steadily increasing costs over the last three years. You know, when we first went to the self insured plan or the self funded plan. Was at the end of nineteen and none of us knew that COVID nineteen was going to hit the United States and. And quite honestly, that was probably the best time possible to go self funded, because we know a lot of the claims were down. That year, but we have seen them creep up over the last few years. In twenty twenty two, the loss ratio ran about ninety one point five percent. And yet an estimated surplus of about one point six two million dollars. We had eight claimants in twenty twenty two that exceeded the hundred and fifty thousand dollar stop loss. Or what we call a ISL, and that just basically means that's the amount that the City of Pueblo was on a hook for up to that hundred and fifty thousand over that. It now goes to the stop loss company. In first quarter of twenty twenty three, that loss ratio has creeped up a bit. It's running about ninety three point one percent. And right now, year to date, currently, we have about a two hundred and twenty four thousand dollar surplus. And so far, we've run about two claimants thus far that have exceeded that hundred and fifty thousand dollar stop loss. We're also going to talk a little bit this evening about the Employers Council Survey, the benchmarking. Generally, when we look at that, you're going to see the city plan designs are richer than the benchmark. And that's the state of Colorado and the contribution benchmarking results kind of vary just based on which particular union it is. And maybe what they've negotiated as far as their rates or percentages. Bottom there, you're going to see the renewal increase over the last several years has been pretty favorable. Especially when we compare that to the years prior, when you were fully insured with United Healthcare or any of the other vendors. Especially when we were running in some of the low twenties and mid to high teens and renewals. So overall, the self funded plan is running really well. When we first rolled the plan out in twenty twenty, we kind of agreed upon about eleven percent increase. And we wanted to make sure that we were seeding the plan well, so you could build that surplus. And then for twenty one and twenty two, there was no increase at all, so it was a zero percent increase. And then in two thousand twenty three, our underwriters and actuaries suggested that we do a four percent increase. So over the last four years, you'll see it's been about a total of fifteen percent. Which again is has been running really, really well. When we look at national trend on medical insurance nationally, that ranges anywhere between six to eight, eight and a half percent. So when you look, we're definitely beating trends with this plan. And want to continue to make sure that it runs strong and that you continue to have that good surplus. So with that, I'm going to turn it over real quick to Sean, and she's going to kind of walk through the self funded review. And kind of walk through what the numbers are and then we'll go into the benchmarking. Sean, it's all yours.
Thank you, Danny, and good evening, everybody. I know this is a bit of an I chart for you there, but let me just explain what we're looking at. We like to report month by month for that current claim year and then the two prior years for an comparison. So in the top section, starting on the left, we have our enrollment, so that is the total number of employees enrolled in any one of the five plans. At any tier of coverage. Then we go to the fixed cost section, so that includes your administration fee, and that's what the city pays. Anthem to administer the self funded medical plan. Our stop loss insurance, again, financially protects the city from both individual large claims and. An amount of large or an amount of claims over the plan year. And so that total fixed cost for the twenty twenty two plan year was a little over one point eight million dollars. Now, our next section goes through the actual claims. Again, by month, you can see that it varies each month. This is gross total claim, so this is before our individual stop loss reimbursements. So between medical and pharmacy in twenty twenty two, our gross claims totaled ten point six six two million dollars. Now, for stop loss claimants, as we said, I believe there was eight stop loss claimants over the individual stop loss level that year. One point one million in reimbursements. So our net claims that the city was responsible for. Nine point five for one million dollars. And if you'll see down below that first blue line, that's about a three point one percent increase when we look at a per employee per month basis. And we really do all comparisons per employee per month basis, because that takes out fluctuations. Within enrollment. Now, total medical plan costs in that far right column brings together our fixed cost total with our net claims. And so that total eleven point three six six million or a two point two percent increase over the twenty twenty one plan year. This is a snapshot of our large claimants, some diagnosis information and totals over that stop loss. So total paid for that claimant. And then what was reimbursed to the city over that stop loss level, again, down in the gray line, that total reimbursement, one point one two one million. Those claimants listed here, the twenty one claimants were responsible for just under thirty five percent of the planned spend. Now, in the red box, we look at how the claims performed. To the stop loss, so that maximum claim basis. And the maximum claims based on the stop loss contract was twelve point oh two five million versus our actual claims of nine point five million. So. Again, ran well under the maximum, about ninety nine point two percent of expected. So really right where. The stop loss carrier expected that to be. When we go to the orange box, that's total planned performance. So that takes what the city budgeted. For all of those fixed costs and claims. Against what the actual claims and fixed costs that came in, that's where we get our ninety one point five percent loss ratio. And our estimated surplus of one point oh six two million dollars. Before we move to quarter one twenty twenty three, does anybody have any questions?
Seeing none.
All right. Now we'll look at quarter one. Again, claims through March is in the top section and then we'll compare that to twenty twenty two and twenty twenty one. So through March, our fixed cost total, five hundred and fifty five thousand. Our gross claims total, two point six two five million. And on a per employee per month basis, that's a reduction of three point six percent. Over individual stock plus only a hundred and thirty one thousand thus far, so that's. A little more than half of what it was for the full year last year. So our net claims. Two point four nine three million or two point three percent above the twenty twenty two total at twelve thirty two thirteen. Per employee per month. When we add in our fixed costs, our total plan costs are three point oh four four million. And that on a per employee per month basis of just under five percent increase. When we look at our large claimants, we do have four over a hundred thousand dollars. Two of those, as we said, have exceeded that hundred and fifty thousand dollar stop loss level. Total reimbursements there, a hundred and thirty one thousand. Claims performance, we are running at eighty four point eight percent of what was expected. And then total planned performance, we have our ninety three percent loss ratio. Our budget thus far, three point two six eight million versus actual three point oh four four million. Questions before we move on?
No, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to put together a little graphical representations. You can see each year in twenty and twenty one. We have in the blue, our budget accrual. And then in the orange, that was the actual cost that came in. And then the gray represents the estimated surplus. As you can see, that actual cost is creeping up over the last three years. Twenty twenty was the anomaly with the shutdown, not a lot of healthcare being done outside of COVID in that year. So twenty one and twenty two, we feel. Is sort of moderating back to a normal level and then we will be, of course, tracking twenty twenty three as we get further into the year. As we look at what we estimate the actual surplus would be, we have our budget accrual for twenty twenty one and twenty two and then quarter one twenty three. Versus our actual cost. And so that's where we have calculated an estimated surplus of six point oh seven six million dollars. Now. We, of course, will be working with finance throughout the year to make sure that they track along with our estimation. We're going to turn it over to benchmarking unless somebody has a question in the meantime.
Go ahead.
Thank you. You're on mute, Danny.
Three years into Zoom meetings, you'd think we'd have that down by now. So on the benchmarking, there's going to be several slides that look very familiar and it's basically just the same information, only walking through the different plans. That the city offers, the high deductible health plan, number one, number two, the HMO plan, and then the PPO plan. So again, once we kind of look at one of these, we can, we can go a little quicker through the others. It's not uncommon nationally with all of our clients or municipalities in Colorado that will get a call. And maybe an employee was talking to a friend that works for another company or talking to a neighbor and they're like, you know what, our plans are, don't seem near as rich as my friend or my neighbor. And so these plans, benchmarking plans are something we do a lot. The problem with that is sometimes they don't, it's not apples to apples. They're not sure what they're looking at or what their friend or neighbor might actually have. And so these reports are really good. To get an idea of what's happening in the state of Colorado. So on this particular program, you're going to see Plan One, Plan Two, those are your high deductible plans, and then the Employers Council Survey. Which is obviously government, industry, municipalities in the state of Colorado. So anything that's in red, you are obviously, you can kind of see the differences there. That means you're better, they're worse. And then if there's red in your column, that means you might be a little low. So for instance, under the high deductible health plans, you're going to see what your deductibles for a single and a family are. First plan, two thousand. For a single, thirty five hundred for family and on your HDHP plan two is twenty five hundred and four thousand for family. You can see the average in the state of Colorado for government slash municipalities is higher than that. And so that's why obviously those are in red. So your benefits are richer than the average in the state of Colorado when we look at municipalities. Co insurance, your particular high deductible health plans do not have any co insurance. They're covered at one hundred percent. After the employee or the member meets their deductible. You'll notice the Employers Council shows that eighty five percent. So you'll notice that the employee has a percentage that they have to pay. Even after they meet their deductible. Out of pocket maximums for single and family. Again, you'll see that your guys' plan is richer. Than the Employer Council survey, uh, on the statewide Colorado. And then when you look at office visits, emergency room, prescription drugs, all of both of your plans are subject to deductible. And then you'll notice that the Employers Council, those plans are subject to deductible than the co insurance. So in reality. Your plans are even a little richer there. Now, a couple of areas where you might be a little behind there is on the HSA contribution. You guys are doing eight hundred annually on both plans and you'll notice that. The average is about a thousand seventy for single and about eighteen seventy for family. So it kind of gives you a little bit of an idea on the on the differences there. Next one here, we're going to look at the actual cost to the employees compared to the survey. And again, it's the high deductible health plan, number one and number two, and then the survey on the far right. You'll see employee only all the way down to family, and this is broken out by union. So again, it's a little bit different depending on the union and what they've negotiated over time. But you'll see under the police that the employee only is paying about nine point nine percent of the total premium. Which is about eighty five dollars and fifty four cents a month. High deductible plan two, you can kind of see to the next there. And you're right in line with what the Employers Council does, and you can kind of follow that along the lines through the employee spouse, employee, children and family. Now, one thing I will point out is because your plans are richer in most occurrences. You're going to notice that maybe the the cost that your fire or police or general services are paying might be a little bit higher. Just because those plans are richer. We look down below at the fire, you'll kind of see what their percentages are and what they're actually paying on both plans, again, compared to. The the survey. The next slide just walks through general services, so you can again see them. Compared, we apologize, we couldn't get it all on one screen, otherwise it'd be really small, but this gives you an idea of what they're paying percentage wise. And then obviously compared to the survey. The next slide then goes through the HMO plan, same thing, same concept as the the previous slides. You'll see HMO tier one and HMO tier two. Obviously, there's two HMO plans to choose from. And HMO tier one is the richer of the two plans. And you can kind of see that the survey with some of the Employers Council, there's a lot of red over there. And again, your plans are richer than what the average is in the state of Colorado for, again, government entities. You'll see the copays, emergency room, prescription drugs, what those copays are as well. And then we again go back into on the next couple of slides, we go into again the percentages in the amount that they're actually paying out of their pocket. To be in one of those plans. And again, you can compare that to the far right column on the on the Employers Council Survey. And then you'll see police and fire and then again, general services. And then this next slide goes through the actual PPO. And again, you'll see you're all red on the far right, which means that the the plan that the the city is currently offering on the PPO is much richer. Especially on this PPO plan. As theirs is all in red and yours is all in black, which means again, richer benefits. And then the next slide again walks through the percent or the dollar amount that the employees are paying out of their pocket. So again, hopefully this is a good snapshot. I know we're running up against our time. But hopefully this is something that will maybe create some questions between you and and HR. And we're more than happy to jump back on a call or or go through this or answer questions via email, but wanted to make sure you had this information. So the last slide we're really going to go over is the the renewal overview and Sean, I'll let you go ahead and talk a little bit about this.
Thank you. We just wanted to give you a historical perspective of what has happened with the renewal and we talked about it a bit with the executive summary, but wanted to provide you the data behind it. Also, our prior year loss ratio, how a plan is priced in a subsequent year is. Really dependent on how it is run, really in the twenty four months prior to us really setting that budget. And so in the twenty twenty plan year, the prior year was twenty nineteen when you're fully insured and that plan had an eighty point eight percent loss ratio. The PE PM cost was fourteen thirteen twenty eight. And we recommended an eleven point eleven percent increase, which the city and the unions agreed upon. So we set our self funded plan in place. Now, twenty twenty one, when we look back to twenty twenty, because of the COVID shutdown, it ran really great, seventy three point five percent loss ratio. And that PE PM cost was one thousand one sixty four sixty two. And so we recommended no change for twenty two. The plan ran great again, eighty eight point nine percent loss ratio, fourteen oh four sixty two for that. PE PM cost. So again, running great, we recommended no increase. And then in twenty two, you did, we did start see those costs creep up ninety one point five percent. Loss ratio and the PE PM cost. Came up to fourteen thirty four eighty six, so we did recommend a four percent increase there. So when I said a minute ago that that twenty twenty plan year really that reduced the cost, you can really see that in our eleven sixty four sixty. you can really see that in our eleven sixty four sixty two. And then the two subsequent years, coming back to that fourteen hundred range, you can see that normalization from where you ran in twenty nineteen. Thank you. That is what we put together for today. Do you have any questions for Danny and I?
Yeah, great. Thanks, Danny and Sean. Uh, Counselor Flores looks like he has an immediate question.
Yeah, the, the question is this, uh, and, and I was the one that asked that you come uh, before us to tell us uh, a little bit about our self-insurance plan, and you guys did an excellent job this evening. Um, but the question really arose uh, as a result of uh, what we find ourselves as a city now, you know, we, we, we have continual negotiations with our unions. And then we also are looking at maybe increasing pay uh, just because of inflation and other factors. But I wanted to point out that if you take twenty, if you take the year of twenty twenty one, twenty two, and twenty three, over those three years, the average increase was about one point three percent, which is, I think, amazing and amazing. Uh, our employees really haven't seen much of an increase. And that health insurance is very robust for our employees, which is a very good thing. And uh, but I just wanted everyone to know that the health insurance premiums has, have stayed pretty level steady for the last three years and should not be included as a negative here. Because as we were hearing presentations, the employees were concerned not only about their salaries, but also about the increased cost of their health insurance. And I think this clearly spells out that uh, we have uh, a, a very good plan. Uh, we should have been self-insured way before twenty twenty, but that's another story. Uh, but anyway, uh, am I looking at tho, at that correctly, twenty one, twenty two, and twenty three?
Absolutely. And I think that's a great point. And especially, you know, if you were running and, and, and claims were low. A-again, I mentioned medical trend, uh, and that's just the cost of inflation, of medical inflation. And so when you look at that, it run averaging six to eight percent a year nationally. And when you get two years with zero and one year with a four, you're absolutely correct. And it's just a little over one percent per year. Uh, but uh, and that's, you're looking at it exactly right, that, you know, the plan is running well. The employees are benefiting from that, being good utilizers of the system. Um, and so again, I think when you look at the benchmarking, you see that the plan designs are very rich. And the premiums have stayed very, very stable over the last several years.
Right. I, I like the contrast too between our plan and then the uh, uh, basically, uh, what you would call the national averages. Uh, we, we are providing a, a really good product to our employees. And uh, I, I just wanted to recognize our people that do a lot of work on this. And, and of course, to you two that uh, manage this. So no further questions for me, but thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Saying none, thank you so much for that comprehensive over, overview about our self-insured health plan, Danny and Sean. Um, thank you for joining us Monday.
You bet.
Thank you. You guys have a great evening.
Great. So moving on our agenda, um, we're going to hear an update from our Bloomberg Harvard Fellow. So can I have Ms. Yari Nunez to the podium?
Okay, good evening, everyone. Um, thank you for being here, for allowing me the space to give you an update. Uh, I am the Harvard Bloomberg City Hall Fellow, also known as a Diversity and Inclusion Outreach Coordinator with the City of Pueblo. Um, and just to give you guys a reminder, I did start this two-year fellowship in July of twenty two. Um, so we are about ten months into that fellowship now in May of twenty three. Um, the end of the fellowship will be in July of twenty four. So I figured it'd be about time that I let you all know what I've been up to. Um, and I've focused on some of the bigger initiatives that I've been working on in the past ten months. Um, the first one was that the city received a City for Financial Empowerment Fund. Um, and we wanted to look at this and find ways to increase financial empowerment through an equitable lens um, and focus on providing some financial resources to those that may not have the opportunity to engage in financial literacy workshops or anything like that. Um, so our first focus was offering the financing higher education workshops. And we worked with D sixty schools to identify um, eleventh grade students that were low income and um, first generation students, um, so that they would get some financial empowerment and understand the cost of attending college and how to pay for that. Um, and that was very successful. We had a very great response rate from D sixty admin and also from the students that participated in the workshops. Um, we had six in total of those. Then we worked on our Building Better Credit. Um, this was for anyone above the age eighteen. And we partnered with local financial institutions. Um, we had five of these, three at SRDA. And sorry, two at SRDA and three at the local um, Pueblo City County Libraries. The next initiatives that I worked on were with the Bloomberg Center for Public Innovation at John Hawkins University. The first one was the Innovation Training Program, which is ITP. Um, we worked on increasing community engagement to explore diversion and intervention amongst middle school aged youth. Um, and we did that through a variety of ways that we have presented on before, so I'll move on. Um, we also worked on the Activating Innovation Challenge, or sorry, Activating Innovation Champions, which is the AIC. Um, and for this, we really looked at assessing the hiring and advertising processes for Pablo's Parks and Recs. Um, especially with, well, specifically for the part-time temporary seasonal workers during the summer. Um, and just making sure that these processes were equitable and accessible to everyone, especially those with marginalized communities. Um, something that I'm working with now, and this is really spearheaded by our municipal court. Um, Judge Carla Sykes is in charge with this. But it is the National Leagues of Cities, the cities addressing fines and fees equitably. Um, Pueblo is one of eight cities in CAFI's twenty twenty three cohort. And I have the list if y'all are interested in knowing what the other cities are. Um, but our focus is on general offense fines and fees. So we are hoping to expand the court's existing reformative justice approach and inform inequitable policies. Um, and also learn how these fines and fees are affecting our population and what we can do there. And maybe also explore new collection models. Um, so far, we have distributed and created an online demographic survey um, and distributed that to over a thousand people who have been identified as receiving fines or fees between January of twenty one and May of twenty three. So over the last two-ish, two and a half years. Um, and we did also conduct a preliminary analysis just to see how the distribution of the last six months and fines of fees have been spread across age, zip code, um, offense, and the amount owed. And we are, have also scheduled focus groups to begin in June of twenty twenty three. We'll have two um, at the libraries and one will be in the morning, one will be in the evening for those whom we need different times. Um, to speak a little bit more specifically about the diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives that I'm doing specifically for city. Um, we began, or I began facilitating um, DI definition workshops with the different community members across um, the city. We've had nine so far and are still scheduling more. Um, but these are basically workshops where community members can co-develop definitions of diversity, equity, and inclusion, justice, and belonging. Um, and that'll be adopted by the city and inform some of our practices moving forward. Specifically, our DEI Strategic Action Plan. Um, and that is our, will detail our city's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and also hopefully be updated annually. And that is all. Thank you. Um, and I'm open to answering any questions.
Thanks, Yari. Uh, questions from council? Yari, you spoke, uh, I know that in the last couple of months, you did a survey about childcare needs. Can you talk a little bit about why you did that and what the outcomes of the survey were?
Yes, of course. So when I first started um, this fellowship, um, Laura and a few other people had expressed that we had a lot of our police department and fire department and people out in the fields, especially with Parks and Recs, um, that were saying that cha, the lack of childcare in the city prevented them from doing as good of a job as they wanted to or take, or prevented them from taking on shifts, or even for some people prevented them applying for position in general. Um, so we decided to do the childcare interest survey to gauge if that was actually something that was happening in our city. And if people would be interested in che, receiving childcare, should we explore that option with the city? Um, nothing was promised. Um, we were exploring just the interest, um, seeing if that was something that our city employees wanted and how we can do that. Um, we had a large amount of response. Um, I believe it was about twenty four percent of our actual employees responded. Um, and of those twenty four percent, eighty percent stated that they would be interested in childcare through the city, whether or not they had children themselves or not. Um, a large portion of the respondents also stated that even if they didn't need childcare, that they knew somebody who did need childcare. Um, so we had a, a huge response to that and a huge need. Um, and we, in the city, Laura, um, especially helped me to reach out to people and kind of build connections to try to see and explore what we can do to begin looking into it.
Um, other questions or comments? I, I do, you know, that's a huge need. So I appreciate you looking into that need and then addressing it, Ms. Fano.
Um, thank you. And, and I just wanted to, to give you a quick update too. Yari started internally ten months ago, and so we started with what we could do internally. So she looked at demographics within our city departments and um, with um, with Marissa has that information also. And then expanded to what we could do with a survey internally with her research. And that prompted the um, the childcare um, concerns and um, survey. Uh, we have extended externally to build a partnership where um, um, several of you attended the ribbon cutting at um, Health Solutions. And they are, are looking into, right now, they're taking children in, in uh, on normal work hours. So drop off seven thirty, pick up five thirty, but they're really looking with the state to explore that extended um, uh, uh, tour, oh, for nurses and dispatch officers, police and fire, because it's also very health, uh, health concerning for nurses and healthcare workers, where if you have a shift from three to eleven, you don't have many places or any in the city where they're, they can drop off children that are, you know, not infants but need childcare. And then the same is, so they're still exploring that and, and, and really keep the city in mind to be a partner if, if and when that um, jumps to, to, to approval by the state. And the same is true of Nathan Stern, as he is working and received a grant um, to expand the Rocky Mountains Air uh, building uh, childcare facility. I spoke with him last week. So it's not a, a dead issue, it's just slow and developing, particularly for those shift works for, for childcare. Uh, Yari has met and worked with um, Children's First at, at Public Community College and, and Angie Shehorn. So still, still some um, work to do, but also some opportunities to share with city employees.
Great. Other questions from Yari? Uh, Counselor Flores?
I don't know if you, if you were here earlier, but um, I, I ran across, um, I'm going to get this card in here. Uh, uh, Dr. Kasevich, she's with District Sixty. And uh, she was, I'm hoping that she's going to come on a televised night to talk about an uptick uh, in the amount of mental health issues involving children in school. And uh, I, I really think that this might be, uh, if you're looking for another project uh, to maybe, after we get the presentation from uh, Dr. Kasevich, that we might want to look at this further. Uh, because it's a, it's, it's a, an issue. They're seeing more homeless children in our school district. Uh, they're, they're uh, much more um, issues with uh, anxiety and, you know, fighting and all of that stuff that happens in school. But she's seeing uh, an uptick, and this is her job. And I think that at some point, maybe you, you know, after her presentation, uh, it, it probably, the next gap probably isn't three or four weeks away. But that maybe that's something that you can explore with her uh, and uh, identify maybe a survey of the needs that we have. Uh, we, we have um, a lot of mental health nonprofits in the community. And uh, we need to start, you know, working with them closely about how they're addressing a lot of these issues that are in our community. And what can we do to maybe get them more involved in solving these problems?
Thank you.
Oh, one last question. Have you learned to drive yet?
I am currently learning. I haven't had a lesson in a while, but yes.
I just have to rest you about that.
I've been studying for my permit, so doing good. Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation.
Other questions for Yari? Saying none, thanks for that presentation, Yari. And we look forward to hearing a little bit more about the EDI um, action plan when it gets created.
Thank you.
Great. Last on our agenda, moving right along, is an aquatic center update. So Mr. Meyer.
Good evening. Today I'm going to talk about the Aquatic Center. We did a study, um, oh, we finished up a little around the year, year and a half ago. And uh, can bring it back to you guys, kind of give you a uptick on what's basically gone on, which is not much. And so kind of get some direction from you where we want to go with this thing. So very remembers, um, this aquatic center was um, put out. Uh, we had an arch, we hired an architect and do a facility study. And they went through a whole planning process. This is kind of a conceptual design that they came with that's down on the River Walk. It's basically where the Riverwalk Harp's office is and where the transit building currently is. Uh, on the left side, you'll see the new boathouse that's part of the uh, bar, um, Harp's uh, one A project that they're getting ready to build with funding from the one A funds and extending the channel down through there. So this will be across the channel from that. It shows a, a large glad, glass front uh, facing the, the Riverwalk. Shows us some tubes uh, coming out of the building and then going back in. And so it's kind of a nice, unique, different kind of a building for down there. Um, and the floor plan, um, and this is just conceptual, just all conceptual. We really was basically trying to figure out how this is gonna, uh, what the funding is and what it could look like. And so this is the floor plan of that facility. It shows the little box on the left-hand side of the picture shows, um, as it comes in off Alan Hamill. This would be the lobby area, the pink area is the lobby area and the concession, or the kind of a, some office space up there. And a kind of a viewing area with some concessions there on the, we're overlooking the pool area. And that would sit right above, then the floor plan to the right of that, where the yellow is at. That was, what that would set above. And the, the yellow is the locker rooms. And so you have the men's and women's locker room on the above, on the top area. And the bottom area is the family locker rooms. Um, the wing of rooms down along the bottom of the picture shows, uh, those are mechanic, electrical rooms, mechanical rooms. And um, I think an event uh, room, like a party room where they can rent and have access in and out of the pools. You see in the pool area, the, the big pool area is um, a warm, kind of warm pool. Should have brought a pointer. Um, a warm pool in that big area right above the gray. The colorful splash pad area is to the left of that, the lazy river as it goes down through there. The slide is up in the right-hand corner. Comes down to a pool that joins in the little lazy river. And then the little independent pool that's at the very top of the drawing is a, they call it a flow rider. And it's kind of a surfing pool that would, um, you go on there and you get on a wave and you, you surf and um, for however long. And then it's, it's pretty cool. I've seen it in action. And I think it'd be a really a hit. And I don't think there's too many other places um, that I'm aware of in the, along the front range. And then outside, it would, does also have an outdoor splash pad. Then, then the vent pool to the right of the building is the lanes. And that's where the lap swimming takes place. That's where the competition takes place. And diving competition takes place. And then it has a row of bleachers there on the edge that are gray. This is the second uh, floor plan that we had them put together. Uh, what would it take to maybe add a gymnasium? Maybe add a gymnasium to this area, and so you see in the tan area, what that gymnasium, when he city doesn't have any basketball courts, and so we always have to go out to the school districts. We have to beg and borrow for times to get in for our youth programs. This would allow us to run our own programs, schedule our own events, or our basketball programs. And this is the way it would have to lay out with that, and we'd flip-flop the locker rooms, so the locker rooms could be shared between the pool activities and the locker room and the basketball courts. And then the pool, competition pool, there was some need, there were some questions that came up. Do we have enough lanes? And so we added three more lanes into this pool, and I think it's an eight-lane competition pool, which I believe is more the school districts needed and CSU and P and, and I think all wanted more of the eight lanes. And so it's twenty-five yard pool, it's not a fifty-meter pool. This was more feasible, more economic for us. Little history, as, as everyone remembers, this was originally started as an R T A project, or it is an R T A Project Regional Tourism Act. And it, it's been, it's kind of the final phase of that project. There, we hired Will Perkins and Wills back in twenty-one to start the design project. We had three public meetings, we did a community-wide survey of aquatic needs. And we presented to you guys back in September twenty-sixth of last year of the whole, the architects came down and did a whole presentation to you. And there you see a link of that aquatic report. So basically, the cost, the summary of costs, the quad, the forty-seven thousand square feet is the basics square foot of the aquatic center, not the one with the gymnasium on it. And it was, gymnasium was another eight thousand square feet on above it. Aquatic center cost just for the aquatics was forty-five million six hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred dollars, and then to add the gyms to it was another four million, seven hundred thousand. And so fifty million dollar facility that would benefit and really be nice for the community. I think could get a lot out of it. It would eat parks to have the gymnasiums added to it, because then we could be utilizing the locker rooms and the office and the parking, and we wouldn't have to ever build any of that if we wanted to do a standalone system. Now, to operate that kind of facility, they, they went through the numbers. And it was one point nine million dollars of operating expense. An estimated annual revenue that would be brought in from a facility such as this size would be one point six. And so it still would be about a three hundred and forty thousand dollar shortfall each year to operate this annually. So kinda looking to you guys for next steps, you know, what, what are your directions? Where do we wanna go with this thing? Identify funding sources, what kind of timeline we're thinking, or what, you know, kinda need a little bit of feedback from you guys. Where, where we wanna do with this? We, I hate to see this go back on the shelf and have it sit for, you know, forever. Cause it's costs are only gonna go up, but just a little bit of direction from you guys would be great.
Great, thanks, Stephen. Counselor Flores and then Counselor Warner?
Is the, the, the construction of a facility like this, is it dependent on the timing of when we are going to be moving the transportation building? Because that's still is, is a big deal if we can't, you know.
You're correct.
We don't have a, a time when we're gonna move the transportation building.
You're correct. That would be, and it's, I guess it's based on a couple of things. One is, we gotta get rid of the transit building if we wanna locate it here. Two, if it's an R T A project, that was kind of one of the stipulations of the R T A project was it needs to be located in around the, the River Rock Channel. If there's no R T A funds going into this project, cause I'm not sure if there is any, that would be an urban renewal question. I know that at one time there was four million, but I'm not sure if there's still any money still available for R T A projects. But then if, if no R T A funds go into the project, we could locate this thing elsewhere, and it'd probably be better utilized elsewhere, where you're not taking up riverfrontage. And then the transit building then would need to be moved so suddenly if we wanna do something independent with this. So I guess it's a twofold question. Yes, we need to get rid of transit's center if we wanna locate it down here. Or no, if we want to locate it somewhere else and we don't use R T A funds.
Right. The other thing I want, and, and maybe we can ask the transportation director as to what he sees as the potential, a date that maybe the feds will come forth with the funds that we need to move the transit center. Cause I know we're going to be moving that over to Erie, aren't we?
Yeah, yeah. That's right, and I don't know much more than that. I think that's, maybe Andrew can answer that question, but Ben definitely could.
And then you know that they opened up East High School and Centennial. Right. They, they have got the ribbon cutting, and they're gonna start utilizing the schools in August. And both of those schools are just awesome. I mean, they, they are beautiful. They, it's all modern. I mean, it's state of the art, everything. The only negative I heard was the loss of their swimming pool. And at some point, I think, I think the school District sixty, and maybe even seventy, in some of the charter schools and in Pueblo West and in Pueblo could be part of the solution of where we're gonna find all this money to do this.
You know, we, when we started this planning process, we went around independently talking to some of the school districts in Pueblo West and say, hey, come on board, see what you can bring to the table. Maybe help gets us funded and planned. And we didn't get, didn't get a whole lot of support from them at that time, at the beginning. Maybe now it catches a little traction. They're gonna need a place to have their swimming events. I know they're looking forward to this being built. And so, yeah.
It wasn't so much the, the staff, or it was really parents that were really, that had their children in, in diving and in swim meets that are very concerned as to, you know, what, what, what is the district going to do? So they might have a different look at this now.
Could be.
But we, we do need to figure out where we're gonna get the money. And you know, one, one of my thoughts is that we, we have, I think we own one of our parking structures outright. There's, there's no, no debt on, and I think it's the one across on Main Street. And potentially part of the solution would be using that as collateral of some sort. And, but I, I appreciate the update.
Counselor Warner? Counselor Maestri, looks like you had something. Yeah, I guess.
Show me the money.
I guess though, some, I mean, similar to Counselor Maestri's perspective, I mean, you're, you know, you're one of the experts around parks, perks and recreation, which this would fall under. Are there grants for this, the state or a federal level for infrastructure?
You know, I've, I've looked, I don't see a whole lot of grants. This, this is kind of big money. You, you can get your typical three, four hundred thousand, half million, maybe. Goco typically doesn't fund indoor swimming structures like this, that's kind of the big one. But maybe some of the other federal programs may, but not to this level, not to the forty-five to fifty million dollar level. That's gonna have to, that's gonna have to either take, you know, bond or C O P funding, or a vote to the people of a tax. You know, and, you know, a sales tax increase, or, you know, put it out to the vote, see what happens. You know, something major like that to make this happen.
Have we looked at what that would translate into like mill levies? If we were to do some sort of mill levy proposal or bond proposal, like what that would look like?
So you wanna, the, the one thing you wanna watch out for property taxes, if you raise it to nineteen percent, I think, mill, then you, your sales tax automatically goes away. I don't know the exact number, but it's in the, it's in the sales tax ordinance that was adopted by a vote of people. So I don't know if that would be even, I think you're at seventeen now, so.
Counselor Flores?
Just have a quick question. On the operating costs, it would appear to me that the aquatic center always was intended to be a tourist attraction. And, and it seems to me that the, the, the tourism portion of it, that the operating cost could be covered by a higher rate for tourists versus, you know, maybe school-aged children here in Pueblo. So that, that is an idea that I think that that has to be looked at.
I think some of that was taken into account, tourism, right, for missions and, and what that tourism missions were. And I think that was the, the highest factor was around six hundred thousand dollars, where the annual memberships or locals would be more around the three hundred. And then the rental outs for parties and that stuff would be around forty-five thousand, so that, that's how they looked at that outside revenue coming in. Then you also got programs that you're gonna be putting on, and then, you know, special events. So that was kind of made up the whole revenue picture.
The water park they have in Colorado Springs, they're on the north end. Bear County, I, I don't remember the exact name of the organization. But, but the, the pricing there you should look at, because it is very expensive. To go.
At the Wolf Lodge, pardon me? Wolf Lodge?
Wolf Lodge. And, and it's.
That's private and they put a hotel room with it.
Anyway, thanks.
Counselor Maestri?
So in the operating costs, there isn't a, an amount that if we had to, you know, get a loan on it or bond money or whatever, that's not part of the operating cost. That would be in addition to what you have there in your figures.
Right, that three hundred and forty thousand shortfall that we'd have. That would have to be over and above budget.
Basically, you're showing us a project that's really runs in the negative.
Other questions for Stephen? It sounds like we don't really have direction other than.
Need a thumbs up or go forward or don't go forward. I guess that's the hundred dollar question. And it, and it could still be that, we just need to kind of think about that, whether. You know, and I don't know what, how affects our R T A contract or agreement with the Regional Tourism Act. We are, it's in the contract or agreement that we were gonna do aquatic center. That's, that's all I don't know. I don't know how legally binded it is and so forth.
Perhaps we check with our friends at Pira then to find out how much R T A funds are left and what that R T A looks like.
I think the bigger issue is location, cause the transit move is a grant, it's a fifty, forty million dollar project last I heard. That's gonna be the bigger issue.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, those are two big projects.
We can't do this one until that one.
Unless we relocated somewhere else.
And then perhaps maybe what we need to do then is invite Ben, the Director of Transit here for a work session to talk about what that timeline looks like.
Madam Chair, we can do that, or he can just send an update electronically. We currently have the grant out for in submission, and it probably we own here for several months. When we get Infrastructure Hub information on federal funding out of the B I L and the I H A A about grant opportunities and webinars regularly for bridges and, and transit centers. So there's federal money out there, but it is, I think, the last grant application, fifty-four million dollars, and they're just really not funding at that level. But I can do either. I can either ask for an electronic update quickly or invite to a work session.
Okay, I think an electronic update would be sufficient. I think unfortunately, it's an if, that, then this kind of deal, so let's wait until we hear from that grant. I'm hopeful we'll get it, and then we'll revisit this project.
Maybe we could start looking at other possible sites that may affect that cost as well.
Yeah, I mean, there's, this, this definitely doesn't include the demolition, I mean, the transit building, the Harp building, so that's gonna be additional cost. If we located a blank site that City already owns, that would help offset those costs that aren't accounted for right now. This is the cost you saw tonight was just building and operating the place.
Yeah, but it would, it wouldn't reduce it by, it shouldn't reduce it by more than ten or fifteen million. So we're still at a point where, where we're getting the rest of the money. And to move forward is a waste of money on paper. Paper gets really expensive, and especially when you can't use it.
I think there is some money through urban renewal. I think there's ten, potentially ten to eleven million.
I've heard all different numbers.
Yeah, and, and I'll, I'll follow up on that.
Got you know.
What about using some PEDCO funds? I mean, this is all about economic development, tourism. I mean, we could redirect that.
So it's primary job creating capital improvement?
No, no, we've done it before, so I mean, we've done it two or three times.
That'd have to be reviewed. I, I could tell you.
Yeah, we've done it. But that's a possibility.
Okay, so we'll, we'll wait to hear about the, if, when we receive the transit grant. But thank you for that update, Stephen. And then it sounds like Counselor Flores is gonna follow up with Pira. Okay, so it's six fifty-eight P M. I'm gonna conclude the work session. We're gonna have a brief ten-minute recess for those in the room before we pick up our regular meeting, which will be in about ten-ish minutes.